...town hall, which was really wonderful because it really allowed me to talk to constituents. We had, we started out with about 4,000 people on the call. We had about 500 stayed on for the entire call. So it was really good. It helped me gather information from people that live in the district. And that's, that's just really important. So I'm going to start off by introducing a couple of people. Because afterwards, you might want to talk to some of them. So Nick Meyer. Nick Meyer is my chief staff. My district office is in Braleslake on Route 45. And Sarah Shadman. She's my director of community outreach. I have fabulous staff. I really, really do. My genius is surrounding myself with incredibly good people and letting them do their jobs. And then we've got a couple of people. Alejandra. Alejandra makes this communications staff. She's working with us over the summer. We're so fortunate to have her here from, from Stanford. Natalie Aguilera. And Natalie is also a communications staff. They literally are interns with us this summer and we are just so lucky to have them. Truly. So for those of you that don't know me, I tend to be pretty informal. So I'd like to just start off by just kind of going over why I ran for Senate, just briefly. You know, I'm rea because I really felt that we needed more people going to Springfield that were willing to stand up and do the right thing. Even when it maybe wasn't popular and maybe wasn't popular with your party. But that we just needed more people down there that were willing to stand up for the things that they believe in and willing to stand up and fight for those things. And, I mean, I hate to use the word common sense because it's, it's so overused, but truly, some of it really just is common sense. And in reaching out and talking to people and making sure that you're really representing the views of your district, you know, really that's necessary, reaching out. But then also just being willing to stand up and do the right thing. I don't think we have enough people doing that anymore. You know, obviously, there's no compromise in Congress. We see that. You know, we need people that are willing to discuss things with other people, compromise when necessary, and stand under the principles when that's the right thing to do. So that's why I ran. I felt that Lake County wasn't getting great representation in Springfield. I felt we weren't bringing enough back to this area that we weren't, we just weren't really doing a good job in Lake County. So that's why I ran. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about my first year. So you get down there, and I have to tell you, it's pretty amazing to walk into that Capitol building and to walk in and sit down on the floor and think about the people that have been there for you. I think it's something you should bring to work every day, is that it's absolutely an honor and a tremendous responsibility to be there. So just taking that in was awesome for me. And I'm so honored to be there and so proud to represent you, Pittsburgh, Hill. My office is on the same floor as our president, Barack Obama. And to think that he was there and the work that he is doing now. So it's just this incredible responsibility that you feel being there. And the first couple of weeks, your door just constantly, lobbyists are in and out. It's just crazy, the pace is really kind of, and I'm thinking, what the heck if I don't keep myself, you know, how am I ever going to really learn how this works and keep up to this crazy pace? And somehow, through the first year, you really do get the rhythm of the place. I learned pretty quickly, though, that there are a lot of people, I like to say, they're playing chess. Always making a move, what they're doing, make this happen, do this. And what I learned was that a lot of them are also playing chess. They just think they're playing chess. So they're really obvious in what they're doing. So that's the good news, for me, anyway. I feel like I'm better able to kind of figure out what they're doing. I also learned that it's a very top-down place. It still is way too top-down. And you have President Ploton, who is the president of the Senate, who I quite frankly came to respect tremendously. He is, he allows, and I say allow because I'm going to give you the opposite moment, he allows a lot of autonomy. There's a lot of discussion that goes on and nobody tells me no. They might say to me, you know, Linda, we think this might be a good idea, you know, we think you might want to consider. And I say, no, that's not how I'm going to look at this. But in, in the House, it doesn't quite operate the same way. Michael Madigan has been there a very long time. He's been Speaker of the House, and a lot of people would say that he's a fucking genius, and I probably don't doubt that. But I, I believe he's been there too long. What I saw in the other, in the House is members are afraid to stand up to him. He's so in control. And I can give you a great example of that. When we worked really hard on the Senate side to work on pension reform and worked with labor. Because let's be honest, these pensions, they earn, they pay into them, they're protected by the Constitution. You know, the Illinois Constitution absolutely says you cannot diminish someone's pensions. It's in the Constitution. So we really felt it incumbent on us to, to work really hard with labor unions to come up with an agreement that we could move forward on. We passed it overwhelmingly in the Senate. We waited for the leader of the House to call our bill. He never called that. He'll stop things from happening by simply having a call. Me, on the other hand, they had Senate Bill 1, which Madigan supported. So some would say more draconian, others would say just deeper cuts. Because we are in a financial crisis, so it's understandable that people want us to cut as much as we can. We voted on his bill twice. We voted it down. We thought for sure, you know, that we'd call our bill, vote on it, and we'd come back, maybe with some amendments to it, and we can come to some kind of compromise. You know, to me, that's what you have to have in government. You have to have people that are willing to say, this is where I'm at, this is where you're at. But if we can't come to some agreement, we've got to vote with people a little bit. And, and I don't see that. So that's something, you know, that I would say I really took away from this year, is that I'm actually going to be introducing a bill on term leadership limits in 12 years is what we're going to give them. I don't know how far it's going to go. I think it's probably not going to get called in the House. But I am going to work the bill. I think it's, it's really time for somebody else to have a chance at leadership. And I think it's just helping when that happens. So I'm going to go over just a couple of things legislative update. We said we'd do that, so on the budget. The governor's budget came over and he proposed 400 million in cuts to education. I certainly believe that we'd already been funding education at 89% proration. And what that means is, you know, if we're supposed to be giving education $10,000, which trust me, we're not giving them that kind of money, it means that we're going, we're giving them 89% of what the state, by the Constitution, says we're going to pay for education, so prorating. We're going to drop the prorate down to 83% of the governor's budget. Quite frankly, the Democrats, we got together and we said, we really think we should be budgeting by priorities. You know, and education is a priority. So we were able to keep it at 89% proration because frankly, we got some extra money. There were people that cashed in on a good stock market. And so the state of Illinois had one time veteran income this year than they had anticipated. So that money was used by us. We decided to pay down bills. I can give you the number if you're interested. We paid down $2.3 billion in old bills. The state of Illinois, we still have 766 million in 2013 and 565 million in 2014 we're paying down. We still have, though, I think it's six, I should know the number, so a lot of money that we owe in back bills. But, but we used it to pay down bills. We thought that was really important. I have this, too, if anybody's interested. This is just where your money goes. So I'll leave a couple of them up there. I think it's always nice to know where the state of Illinois spends your money. I think you'd be surprised to see some of it. Yeah, so anyway, I'll just leave it up there for anybody that's interested to take a look at it. So some of the other things that we did, and I kind of went over pensions, but let me go a little bit further on what I did on pensions. So we need to devote over $6 billion, five state pension plans. Increase in cost of cause, unthinking of cuts, obviously, to vital services. While it's clear that we have to address the situation, I think we have to be really aware that we're cutting as little as possible. You know, again, here's what I like to say about pensions. It really is true. These people pay into their pensions. And here's what the state of Illinois did. We said, you know, we're going to borrow from it. We're not going to pay it our part. And this was during Republican and Democratic governors and representatives, and they all did it. They borrowed against it. They pushed it forward and said, you know, no, no, do it later, do it later. And, and we're at it, we are. And of course, what, what's happened is, we borrowed for so long, now we're officially, truly, stealing their money. I mean, we really are. So that's why it makes it so difficult. Any pension reform, I think it's why you've seen it so long, it's why it's taken so long for anything to happen. But the governor appointed on the last day of session, he came to some of us that he thought he might be willing, might be willing to move our positions. I was one of the people that the governor met with. I sat down and talked to the governor, and he asked me to support Senate Bill 1. For me, it's part of draconian. It's, it really punishes people that pay into these systems. So I, first of all, I asked the governor, where the heck he is, that he's coming in on the last day. It's a little late. And secondly, I said, now, you know, I won't vote for that bill. Why aren't you trying to push Madigan until 4/24? But anyway, so the point of the conference committee, which I think really was a good thing. The conference committee is made up, a conference committee isn't created when you can't come to a decision. So you have the Senate over here, the House over here, and we disagree totally. So members are appointed from both houses, so it's by chamber. And to sit down with the intent to solve and come up with a compromise. So I really do think that it probably shouldn't have been done a long time ago. I'm thinking, well, is that like a known job maybe two years ago? But anyway, I'm glad that it's happened now. And I really do believe we're going to see pensions, something that we'll be able to vote on, I would say in August. And if they told us respectfully, called back July, beginning of August. My first question, so you know, we caucus, so the Democrats all meet together, the Republicans meet together, we talk about, you know, what are we going to be doing? And Ms. Prish, I'm going to raise my hand, and I said, okay, so when are we going to really talk about pensions? When are you going to show me the comparisons of all the plans? And there was dead silence in the room. And I was actually told by a senator after, kind of like pat me on the shoulder kind of thing, and go, yeah, we kind of don't do things like that around here. We need to talk to, talk to them. And I said, sorry, just not wanting you. So, yeah, it was interesting. Okay, so pensions, I don't want to go too much longer. Medical marijuana. I voted yes on medical marijuana. I actually did a question to the district on my telephone town hall. Because for me, I wasn't sure how the district felt about it. And that was important to me on this one. Because I probably could have gone either way. I, you know, was not one of those that I had tremendously strong feelings about. And the district really overwhelmingly supports legalization of marijuana by about 70%. So it makes sense to me. I mean, it just does. I mean, there were people that are dying, literally, and it's the only thing that they can do to help them with the pain that doesn't make them even sicker. So to me, it was just a polite thing to do. So pensions. Medicaid expansion. Prior to the passage of the expansion, Medicaid is only available to disabled and low-income families for children under 18. Now all adults with income add a little over 38% of the federal poverty limit for a family of four. That's $15,415 per individual. For $31,800 for a family of four, you can expect benefits to include expanded health care, et cetera. And this is all part of the Affordable Care Act, this expansion. And it allows the state to take in federal dollars for three years to pay for the program. After that, we'll pay, I think it's 10%, a 90% of the program. But if they're not kicking in their money, even at any time, say we're not going to be part of it. Concealed and carry. So that's something that's really interesting. Of course, I think most of you know that the Seventh Circuit said in the state of Illinois you will have concealed and carry law. You will pass it, I think it was by July 9th, by midnight. So we worked very hard to come up with a compromise and passed Concealed and Carry bill. I voted yes. Because, you know, personally, in my opinion, my husband owns guns, my son owns guns, is a hunter. And, but, you know, for me, I mean, my personal opinion would be, okay, I don't get it. I don't know why anybody really needs to have a gun. But that's not what I'm there to do. I'm there to represent and hold up the Constitution of both the United States and Illinois. And many people believe that's exactly what the Second Amendment says. So I think we did the one thing that was stated by passing Concealed and Carry. And I think that the governor, he had a veto, no go right, basically, that suggested 10 different items that you should put into Concealed and Carry. I didn't really disagree with any of them, but there was no way I was going to pass. We needed two-thirds majority once you're out of session, and it wouldn't pass. So I think you're going to see a trailer bill. And a trailer bill, for those of you who don't know what that means, because I should have done it before this year, just means it attaches to a bill and it trailers onto it. I think you will see, the one piece that I really felt we should have made sure of is that you don't get to carry a gun anywhere there's liquor. I mean, currently, the law, the new law, says that it's 50% if, so a restaurant, in other words, you could conceal and carry in a restaurant unless you're selling more than 50% of your total is liquor. I just think that's a, no question. Where there's liquor involved, someone should carry a gun. So I think you'll see that one, and I think you'll see a couple others. Education, it's a big issue for me. I've always been interested in equality in education. I think if you look at other countries in particular, biggest difference where you have federal education, it's really where we have an equal public education for everybody. Where we say it doesn't matter where you live, everybody in Illinois, in the county, gets a good education. Decide what that is, what a cross to honor, and we make sure that every student gets that. So I was really excited to be appointed to a task force that will be studying them next year at one of three state centers. And I'm, I'm, I really am. It'll be an exciting time. I've always been interested in also looking at the same time, possibly a shift, and this is just my opinion at this point. I've always felt that we pay too much on property taxes in what we pay for education. I'd like to see maybe a 10%, 20% swap to state income tax, state sales tax, something I'm interested in looking at, so that people that make more actually pay more. Because you can own a home, any of you, lose your jobs to our home, become retired, and your income has dropped substantially, and you're still paying higher, you know, higher than state taxes. So something I'm interested in. So, you know, election reforms. We also passed a bill that changes. We now have in Lake County, well, the good things that it did is it allows absentee voters to register online, which is great. And it cleans up a couple of things. It allows a little bit more openness there. I voted against the bill. I didn't vote against it because of what it does holistically, it does some really good things. But it also buried inside of that legislation. We have a county clerk, Willard Heathlander, who handles the voting. It's that way throughout the state, with the exception of a couple of counties. We, in this legislation, took that authority away from our county clerk elections, we were creating an election clerk. So we did it without their permission, without them knowing about it. And to me, of any other place where this has been done, in the state of Illinois, it's done by a voter referendum, done by Willard. And it may be a good idea. I have to be very honest with you, I'm not a fan of Willard Heathlander. But it's not what you do if you're not a fan of someone. I just felt this legislation was politically limited and not the right way to do it. So I voted against it. And I think that's all I wanted to go over of those things. And really now, I'd just like to open it up for questions. And I want you to know, this is absolutely not set up in any way, shape, or form. You know, we certainly talk about that by standing, like, oh my gosh, you're really just going to take questions? You're not going to, we're not going to read in my seat, I'm really just going to take questions. I've never been afraid to answer hard questions. Because I feel that, another way, did you, did you work on it? Yeah, okay, good work, it's, sorry, it was a basic work. So I think we're going to start, we got some, Nick Meyer, we got some questions submitted online. I don't know if these people are hearing that. We'll do those first. And, and then I think we have, we have postcards out for writing questions, or they just raised a page? It's great. Okay, so Nick, do you want to read it?
Yeah, I'll do the first couple. So a few of these folks, Beth Beasley, I'm sorry. So we had a question from Beth Beasley of Loughana and Richard, Richard, this is Jesse Oro in Waspsworth, Richard. Do you feel like Senator answered most of the questions about pension reforms or anything you'd like to add?
Certainly.
You know, without knowing the specifics of what the plan would be.
Yeah.
Okay. And if you have questions, like offline, you want to ask, I'm happy to. And thank you.
The next question came from Judith Adams in Waspsworth. Peter, do you hear? Could one unintended consequence of a bad pension reform be increased poverty for retirees who do not have social security?
Oh, absolutely. I was at a meeting today, actually, they call themselves the Annotates. They are, they call it Lake County, there's people that are retired. So they are teachers, they are janitors, they are office workers. Most of them, their pensions are anywhere between $25,000 and $35,000 a year. I think we have this misconception that everybody that's in the teaching profession is making a fortune. And their concern really is exactly that. I mean, a woman said to me today, she goes, I, they don't get social security. Understand that. They don't, you know, they get their pension from SERs, they don't have social security. And she said to me, I'm afraid of moving to my house. I mean, I can barely afford to pay my bills now. These people are retired, they're retired. Can you imagine if we did that with social security? If we said, oh, you know what, we're sorry, we really screwed up and, you know, we're going to pay 3% less.
I don't, I don't know the people where teachers and mothering employees are not paying.
They don't. That's correct.
So if you talk about cutting pensions, they don't have that 13%.
That's it. Yeah.
Can you understand my question? I think this has become a national debate.
Oh, stand up, would you mind? I'm just, sorry.
No, I meant this has become a national debate where it's public employees' pension budgeting, because they've got loss in the private sector. So it's sort of like, well, we don't have ours anymore, and therefore, there's public employees that are, I think our country has to start thinking the opposite way. There's nothing wrong with the pension system. A 401p was never designed to be a pension. And, and we're just, we're disappointed in the sense that we're not going to provide this immunity that people can work for us.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that. I think that, I said today to some people, I think what happens many times, you know, one of the products we've seen in this great recession is that we used to look at our neighbor, if they had a little more than we did, we thought, I wish I had that, or I mean, we're hardly going to get that. I think when things fall apart, people look at other people that have a little bit more and sadly think, why'd she get that? Why'd he get that? And I think we've seen more of that, and it really speaks to our culture. It does. And, and that's a shame, but I think that does happen.
Maybe, maybe it's a good term.
And can you say your name? I'm sorry.
Dean.
Okay.
Maybe it's a good term, but a friend of mine, who went to college and everything, just retired as area superintendent in Wisconsin. Their, their pension system for state employees is all separate from the government total. They're written out touches, and a trust fund that they monitor is separate, which is something.
Might be a great idea.
What is something, something for Illinois to think of, to put that away from the government's hands.
Sure.
And I find out the many things that happen in Illinois. There's this big pot that we're sticking into.
Absolutely.
In Wisconsin, they've, they've got a place no one touches.
That's actually really good information for me.
It was supposed to be.
No, he does. He's retired.
Illinois.
A little bit more than he was, but I know Wisconsin does.
Right.
He can retire and survive. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure he's going to leave that. But, you know, we've all got college for years. So, I mean, you know.
That's interesting to set it up as trust of some kind.
It is a trust, and it's separate, totally separate.
Sarah?
So he wouldn't run into this.
Just taking a note on that.
He would never.
Because the question I do get is, even though all of the plans now say that we guarantee we will fund at 100% until what we don't want to, you know?
Or you have to turn around and market, and they, they're all those.
Right. So how do you protect it?
I'd like to share another point on pensions.
Sure.
It sounds like, I mean, if you shared with us, that's not a possibility, but wouldn't it be possible to limit those pensions to 100,000 a year?
Absolutely.
You know, and I, I know, I know people who are already like 170, and then they get the cost of living in addition to that.
Absolutely.
I mean, on pensions, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't mean, I don't mean to demean what they've done, it's work, but when they're already at 70,000, they're going to be, they're going to have to operate through that.
Yeah. I think there's two things you can look at. First of all, you own a social security horse, right? When you hit 109,000, I think that's a number now, might be 112, what is it? 113, thank you. When you hit that number, you don't pay the social security anymore. You also don't get benefits about them now when you retire. I think we should do the same thing for pensions. No advance or bucks about that. I also think, and this is interesting, and this comes from people that make very good, that have very good pensions, people that were deans of colleges. Their suggestion is, they should, they should, you know, currently, you do not pay income tax on pensions. And their suggestion was that we should, they should be paying income tax on pensions over, say, 100,000. So there are lots of things, I think, that you can get at that. But we don't want to hurt people that are making 20, 30, 40,000 a year on these pensions. It's just not fair. When people that have bigger pensions, and that's all we hear of them, by the way. You notice when the newspapers talk about pensions, they don't ever use, a person is given a $30,000 pension or a $10,000 pension. They always talk about the ones where they're getting a $150,000 pension.
Like, I did, I did call, and Roseanne asked, and Wes and I presented, I did call her and tell her about their idea, she said she pays off the information.
Well, there are things, they're in there, I can give you the thing.
She wanted to, two years ago, women say, yeah, she wanted to get into the protective fund, it was there, she would say, we need to get in, and then they cut down, stay there.
I asked for a report today from staff on the conference committee, that's the committee that's meeting on pensions. And I've gone to two of the three meetings that have been held across the state just to listen in, make sure I'm keeping myself up to speed. But the report at this point is that the most interesting thing to come out of these pension committee hearings was the fact that nearly all industry professionals agree that the pension payment problem went beyond mismanagement of funds and also had a great deal to do with revenue problem. This acknowledgement is open to worst-awilled conversations about how to best solve our state's revenue problem in conjunction with the pension stabilization discussions. There's a number of solutions that are now being offered on that front. Graduated income tax, taxation, a cost shift on the K-12 system over time, financial transfer, excuse me, transaction taxation. I don't know if you know anything about that, but the traders in Chicago would be a transaction fee, a fee on every transaction. And I should remember the number, but it's literally, do you say it?
It's a couple of cents.
What is that?
It's a couple of cents.
Yeah, but it's like, millions of dollars.
It's not even 0.3%.
I think it's like 3 billion that'll produce in revenue, but there's a bill out there, Mary Flowers, Representative Flowers is working on that on the outside. And then corporate taxation loopholes, looking at closing those. I'm in Italia, it's a great idea, and I think we should do it, absolutely. Not as much on Asian, I don't think, there. But, but anyway, so those are the things that they're, they're really talking about. They've also offered different performance solutions, amortization of the current schedule, taking that out, a variety of things. But I won't take a lot of time in that, but if anybody's interested in where those discussions are going right now, I have it. And again, after, I'm happy to give this to you and talk a little more about it. Yeah.
I'm Ron Rampe.
Okay, Ron, pleasure to meet you.
Thank you. I'm originally from Wisconsin.
Okay, we'll forget it for now. I'm not going to.
But I have relatives, close relatives, one is my sister, and friends in Wisconsin. And they've taken cuts in their pension, what this, that people have talked about, the last four years in a row.
Yeah.
Yes, they have, they have done some work about that.
It's based on how well the market does.
Yeah, it depends on the stock.
We're not talking about that, that I can tell you. That is not in the mix.
Or you're just.
That's awful.
The point of Wisconsin actually with their actual retirement system, they supplement social security. It's not like Illinois. I mean, I get social security programs in the state and add a program that supplement it.
Okay.
Program, but, but at that point, yes, I can see Wisconsin going down in that sense. And hopefully it will, the actual, yeah, it will be provided in sort of security, but I, over the, the positive view are people getting into it, not the older ones who are already retired.
Right.
So, I understand that.
Thank you. Don't go back.
My question.
Sir, then what's your name again? I'm sorry.
I left the answer to you.
Thank you.
Just looking at the whole situation now, if you were going to give us just a little rough, I might go a little.
Sure.
What do you think is going to be the final outcome in the retirement program?
I think there's going to be a compromise, obviously. There's got to be, you know, Senate Bill, I think, you know, one twenty-four oh four was the, the choice between healthcare and the COLA. I, I think you will probably see, this is just my opinion, I think you'll probably see someone with COLA. I think you might see it run, there were some talk about maybe tying it in with the CPI, you know, retaining COLA some maybe one and a half percent one year, going up to as high as six percent, depending on, yeah, believe it or not, this is interesting. When I first heard that, I thought, "Have we taken the leap of our senses that we would actually think that COLA would be six percent? How could we ever afford that? How could we ever?" You know, interestingly enough, now, I should probably not tell you this because otherwise I'm sure you would know. I was old enough in the eighties to live through, when interest rates were very, very high, when high inflation numbers were there. Even then, during that time, the CPI, you would have gotten six percent for two years. That's it. Because it's like, oh, my gosh, that's a nightmare. So, actually, that's kind of interesting. So, if you look at that, you know, if that does end up being on the table, it's actually, it's actually pretty good. It's actually pretty good. So, I think that you might see my, the cap on salaries on pensions, on, on those numbers. I think you could see a racing of retirement age for those that are currently, you know, a scale probably, because the actuaries all show people live longer, obviously, it costs us longer to maintain those pensions. You could see people paying into, more into their pensions instead of seven percent, nine percent, or a couple percentage more. I think those are the things that are the most likely. I think you could also, it may be that we look at taxing pensions above a certain amount also. So, I would say that those things are probably the most possible. You know, I was proud to be called by the Tribune an obstructionist. I was the only freshman to get the label. And I thought, well, that's great, because when I was interviewed by them originally, they called me a handbrake. So, I thought, well, I've gone from leaning on hands to being an obstructionist. So, I really, again, it's my, I brought the Constitution with me because I, I love, we always talk about constitutionality when we talk about the Second Amendment rights. And I defended those and I stood for those and voted for what's being carried. And, and I'll be damned if I'm not going to defend the Illinois Constitution too. And in the Illinois Constitution, it says that we are not going to diminish benefits. It's there. So, I'm going to do my best. I fought for those things, but I do look at the compromises, it's going to have to be helped there. I do.
Hi, Anne, I'm Anne.
Okay.
I'm Catherine Brew, actually, Lauren, this is my twenty-second year.
Okay.
Everything that I've heard so far for, I guess, changing sale contribution or length of anything, has always had to do with age. I'd like there to be competition about the amount of time that you guys have contributed to the system. Because for somebody like me, I'll give you a great example.
Sure.
I was hired, I was hired.
Would you mind? I thought everybody came here to do things.
Sure. I was hired and I attended two.
Okay.
And there was another teacher hired with me coming into teaching in her second career. She now retired this year, at the end of this last full year. I still have how many of you years left?
Right.
And, but she is able to take fully, you know, full benefit out of the system. Whereas I may be penalized because I'm right at that age of, I'm forty-four years old.
Right.
And everything is like forty-five now.
Yeah.
Well, I've been paying him for over twenty years now, but why are we not looking at how long people have been contributing to the system?
Okay. Is there, can we talk further about it? Because I'd be interested, I'll pass it on. I really want to understand how you think we could do that.
I think it would be, it's a service along with your age. Well, I do it, it's some system.
Okay, anybody else?
I have another question. Do you want to?
All this money that's taken on.
Yeah. Well, I think that's what we were just talking about. Because you really can't, because here's how it works, right? I mean, everything here, I mean, I hate to say this, but when times are good, we offer half, the times are going bad. We really do. And what, what happened in the past is, I can tell you what Edgar did, I can tell you what Louie Mitch did. Edgar, Governor Edgar said, "Let's ramp up." That's what they called it. They said, you know, "This year we'll only pay you ten percent." I mean, I'm making up numbers, but we'll pay you ten percent of what we should pay you. Next year we'll pay you twenty percent of what we should pay you. Next year we'll pay, and we'll get up to the point where we're paying double what we should be paying to make up for not paying. Well, of course, it never happened, because by the time you get there, you're like, "Well, we, Christ, we can't do that. We can cut our services for other things." So, then you have Louie Mitch from Wisconsin, who had his, what was his program? It was for children. I don't remember, I can't remember the name of it, nobody had that.
All kids.
Thank you, all kids. The way they funded all kids really was pension money. I mean, true. You know, so, at this point, what they've done is they've changed it. So, it's called sweeping also. I think you've all heard of government, they talk about sweeping funds. And what that means is you can take funds from one, you know, money from another, sweep it, basically. Take it and use it for something else with the intention to pay it back. They changed it so that if you do that now, there's eighteen months. So, if you sweep funds from one fund, you have eighteen months to pay it back. But now, nobody's taking anything out of pensions, and I don't suspect you'll see anything for a long time. But I promise you, twenty years from now, when people have forgotten about it, you know, you have the money. The pensions, let's use some of that. So, I think that the trust fund idea is actually a good one. You know, we've said in all the legislation that we will fund, the law is we will fund at a hundred percent. It's also the law that we will. So, yeah, I think the trust fund's an interesting idea. I can tell you people mean what they're saying now, but I think we need to make it, all you need is the legislators to change laws. That's true. Wish I had better.
A couple things.
Could you say who you are?
My name's Ken Irwin. Couple things.
Okay.
First of all.
And he's an attorney and he probably.
No, 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 no. I used to, years ago, years ago.
Okay, okay. Just want a fair, you know.
I went from an attorney to a muffin shop owner. Next will be a brain surgeon and everything. But my office, my old office at one seventy-nine West Washington, and this was in the eighties, was actually on the same floor as Lee Daniels' office, who had been the Speaker of the House for a little, little while, the Republican Speaker of the House. And one of the things that our senior partner, Brad Stein, who's a brilliant guy, kept trapping Lee Daniels in the hallway and saying, "Why aren't you going through with the legislation that makes the Illinois governor and the Illinois House and Senate stand as a fiduciary in relationship to your pension funds?" And, and that's what you're talking about in a trust, that you have a fiduciary relationship. There's a whole legal subset of requirements that it's, it's much more stringent. Your duty is that much more to protect those funds. Because the other point of it, I, I've been married thirty-three years. And when I got a, you know, I should, four people be miserable. My wife got an MBA while I was going to law school. And she had a lot of job offers. And she ended up taking a job with Illinois Department of Revenue. And her dad was a lawyer, and her brother, who also had an MBA, her brother went out and worked for all sorts of private industry. You know, they're, why are you going to work for the state of Illinois? You could make so much more money. And she said, you know, "I'm going to work for the Illinois Department of Revenue because I get to see twenty-five different businesses." I get to see all the ways people go about going, going about their businesses. And for years, first of all, I'm not allowed to know even where she worked. I mean, she could be going to Sippin' Guzzell Labs or something, but I have to tell you. In those thirty-seven, over thirty years that she's worked for the Illinois Department of Revenue, first as a field auditor and then a field audit supervisor, she's not only brought in individually about fifteen million, a little bit more maybe. Her audit team now is one of the best performing audit teams in the entire state of Illinois. And we're talking eight to ten million dollars a year conservative. And these are the folks that on a management basis, when, when you want these people to go and knock on a taxpayer's door and those taxpayers don't like to see the auditor, we know that, they don't like to see the auditor. And, and now you're telling those, those auditors, "You don't get, your pension is too expensive for us." Her brother, in the same period of time, is making three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and living in Indiana and saying, "We people are stupid, we should do what Indiana does." And they're all, you know, pull up the ladder jack, we're all aboard. And you guys, we teachers can just sit. I, I think there is leadership by responsibility. So, that, that's why I'm all behind you on that Senate Bill twenty-four oh four is a much better bill. I'd like to see you do a little nice, sir, thank you very much. I'll stick my wife on you later. That's, but it's management, it's leadership from the, the front. You know, my dad was a Marine and he was, you lead from saying, "Follow me," not.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Ed. Other questions?
So, we can actually, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, please. Go ahead. Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to jump to higher education, but I've got a couple of folks who came and wanted to get a question asked about college affordability. Evan Brandis, are you here? Evan wanted to ask a question about how we can do college affordability. I'm sure you're aware of your answer.
Yeah, boy, it's really tough because college costs just keep going up. There's a couple of things that are going on right now that I think are, we would really like to, to see come to Lake County. It's Eleanor, send you page, they're doing their community colleges. And what they're doing is they're doing three-year programs now, where they are working with universities. And for, instead of just attending two years at the community college, you can attend three years, be taking classes that will transfer to these universities and be paying community college prices. So, that's one thing that I think would be beneficial. You know, I wish that I could say that we can do what Oregon is doing, which is making sure that if you want to go to college and you live in the state of Oregon and you want to go to a state school, it's covered. I just don't think we're in that position right now in the state of Illinois. But, but, but we absolutely have to be aware that college education costs have so skyrocketed and are making it very, very difficult for these young people that are taking on these loans to have to pay these incredibly high loans back. And, you know, and obviously Congress, you know, which obviously I'm not a Congressman and I don't play one. But we really do have to make sure we're always communicating with our general representatives and telling them how important it is to keep those student loan rates as low as possible, because it does help. But really, overall, college is just too expensive right now. It, it really is. And it would be nice if there was something that we could do to bring down the cost in the state of Illinois. I'm on the Higher Education Committee at the state, and I know some of the, we talked about, I think some of those partnerships, maybe partnerships with private business also, where maybe they're helping to fund, like Abbott. You know, I'd like to see them maybe offering more scholarship money if you're going into that field. I think we can do better there. But I think initially, just to maybe do that three program with the county of Lake County and, excuse me. And also, we don't use our university center as much. I'd like to see the university center, I don't know what the problem is truly, I don't. Is it just promotion? Because really, what a wonderful opportunity to have. We have a university center here in Lake County. We don't have these anywhere else in the, in the state. You know, we are it. And we offer, what is it? I think sixteen different colleges where you can get a four-year degree there. I think we need to do a better job of promoting that and, and working out kind of the bugs that are there. They've had some problems with funding, we've been able to hold them at their current cut front, so.
Hi, my name is Bill Short. First of all, I congratulate you for being an obstructionist. I've been reading about you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Terry Lincoln, because what you've actually done has shown a lot of leadership, because this pension issue is huge.
Thank you.
And along with, if I could just make one comment about what the teacher was saying about retirement.
Yes.
I'm a federal employee.
Okay.
And the way our retirement system is set up, it's a minimum, you have to have a minimum age and the years of service. So, it's roughly three things. You have to be age fifty-five and thirty years of service, age sixty with twenty years of service, or age sixty-two at any age. If you retire before that, there's a penalty, you may lose so much percentage each year. And, and it's very simple, you know, and you've been, you know, you're fully vested after the thirty years or the twenty years, and of course, whatever pension is required. One thing I'm really glad to hear about though, because I think what's really missing in a lot of the dialogue is the revenue side of this equation. I'm sure you've heard of Ralph and Terry and the Center for Taxing.
Absolutely. And the amortization over a longer period of time on pensions.
Yeah, and I think he makes some, and I really believe he is bipartisan, his group, because I was at a forum that he was at, that the IEA sponsored not too long ago. And the unions have made a lot of concessions.
They have.
And they've done it in good faith, because they understand there's a problem, they want to protect the pensions. And he's, you know, as an economist, he explained that if you keep cutting, you're eventually going to lose jobs and you're going to lower the tax base. It's going to do just the opposite of what you're trying to do. So, I'm really glad to hear that that's, because that's really important, I think, graduated tax.
Yeah.
He talked about sales tax and.
Sure.
And some unions call it rotten tax on, on the. But you know, I don't think that's a fair name, because the United States, we did that up until nineteen sixty. We used to tax financial tax, transactions. So, my question is, since, in my mind, pensions are prompts. And if a bank did what the state of Illinois has done for literally the last forty or fifty years, it would be fraud if someone would go to jail. You put your money in the bank, you don't get it out, someone would have to pay for that. So, and, and where it says that the pensions do not be diminished in the Constitution, I think that's pretty strong language.
It is. Very clear.
The question I have is, does that have to be changed through a constitutional amendment, or can you legislate around this?
You know, the President of the Senate felt that, because in twenty-four oh four, they were giving a choice, that it was a contract, that, that members would, excuse me, that members who have pensions, people who have pensions would choose between their current healthcare situation or a change in how their COLA is, is done. And they would make a choice. So, in twenty-four oh four, there was a choice. And, and the Senate felt that giving that choice would make a constitution. The current bills that are being looked at have kind of thrown all of that out. I really think that whatever happens, we're going to see lawsuits. I think that we will. I think we will see people coming forward and saying, "Hey."
I, I for one believe that if you have to make that choice, your pension has to be. Because if you're married and you have a spouse, you have social security or another pension, you're in a whole different situation than if you're a single teacher or, or state worker.
I think what's so difficult, and I've rambled with this, obviously. I think what's so difficult is absolutely knowing that we are in, you know, they call it a crisis. You know, that word is so loaded, but we're in a very difficult financial situation. We absolutely are. As I said, people took the money for years, we're officially stealing the money, as far as I'm concerned. And I wish that there were people that would pay for this. I mean, that would go to jail. Yes, Judy?
I have a question. With the.
Judy Armstrong from Lake D H I.
With the constitutional provision, is that only for state employees, or does that apply in any way to private industry? Because I am not a teacher, nor is my husband. But within private industry companies, you know, we have frequently over the past few years gotten letters simply saying, "This is now the new policy. We have underfunded pensions and therefore, now when your husband retires, he will only be eligible to take half the money that we've told you for twenty-eight years was available." Are there any laws in place that would stop that from happening for my kid twenty years from now? And once we solve the public pension problem. Perhaps could we pay some attention to private industry as well?
Yeah.
Jim works for Federal Mobile, and whose Federal Mobile is an international conglomerate who went through a bankruptcy. When they tried to file bankruptcy in Europe, European countries told them, "Cannot touch pensions. You may go bankrupt, but you cannot touch pensions."
Yeah.
We need that not only in our state, but within our nation.
Yeah, I think it's really a federal, that would be a federal issue, but the protection really is for those that we, that the state has paid protections. So, there really is a different protection. Ed's got a caveat, he's got a.
Ed's got a caveat, he's got a, something he needs to add.
You know, my, my dad, talking about private pensions, my, my dad was, was an employee of Equitable Life Assurants. And, um, and that was way back when, um...
It was dirt, it was just dirt, right?
Well, no, actually, I wasn't going to say that. That was actually when the, the insurance companies were, were, uh, were actually a really high-quality employer regarding pensions. And they actually, and that, that, when you mentioned that, it, it made me think of the concept of acting as a fiduciary.
Yeah.
The equitable actually made a, a, an agreement with their pensions that said, we as, our, our management, and when they became a, a stock company, our stock, individual stockholders act as fiduciary, in a fiduciary relationship, we owe you the pension holders and employees, as you're accruing the value. And the end result was that their pension fund, or all sorts of insurance companies that were either trimming, limiting, their pension fund was, was a fully funded, and actually a pretty profitable pension fund for years.
Yeah.
You know?
You know, I think that...
It is a...
Yeah, what strikes me though is, most people that I've talked to that have pensions really do understand and are saying, look, we're willing to bend here. We're willing to do some things. We understand that the state's in a, in a bad financial situation, and we're willing to bend some, but we want you to protect us as much as you can. I mean, really, that's the message that I get from most people.
Just a little thing, in the Chicago church meeting today in the editorial, so there's a really good commentary on the Constitution in particular, and there is a federal law out there that a company or a industry, whatever corporation, cannot go under without funding its pensions, and the federal law there is...
It's broken down here, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was the discussion, and would, would that all would affect cover?
Well, I didn't see it, I didn't see it. Yeah.
Can I change some stuff?
Of course you can. Uh, Peter Brandt, township.
I'm a Manayat Township trustee. So, you know, you touched on funding education a little bit, and at the township level or local government, uh, one of the issues that we deal with a lot is seniors.
Okay.
Senior property tax freeze. Uh, you know, and I've had this conversation with our assessor, um, and we pretty much disagree on this.
Okay.
The state of Illinois, seniors get a senior property tax freeze.
Correct.
And every year they have to go back and have to go to all these schools.
That's terrible.
Instead of just giving folks a real benefit, um, what about, um, when, when a senior qualifies for a freeze, getting it through the assessment period of three years, so that people are locked in for three years?
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't know what the financial implications that would be as far as, uh, you know, tax revenues and funding the schools. If we could find a better way to fund schools...
Right.
Uh, that would maybe help, but, you know, that's something that folks, they go around in Tennessee and they pay a fraction of what seniors in the state of Illinois have to pay, so...
Yeah.
I think that's an issue, and, um, you know, is it a thing that we could do, like, um, we have...
You know, the freeze, there've been, um, some changes, I, I'll give you some info later, uh, there've been some changes that are beneficial, um, but, but a lot of people talk about having to go every year for the freeze, and it just makes sense to me that you should be able to go and say, I'm senior, freeze my kids, 'cause I'm done.
Right, now, now...
Right, right, instead of having to rego, instead of having to go every year.
When the valuations are going down, then they actually lose them.
Yeah, absolutely, where they throw them at a rate that other values are less, but I'm just saying they shouldn't have to go every year for real, they should just adjust, so there's something we should look at, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Robert Hoffman, and I'd like to know if anything is being proposed or worked on, uh, to change the state constitution, to state that corporations are not people and money is not speech, and ultimately move towards publicly funded elections.
Yeah, um, you know, there's certainly stuff being done at the federal level. I know, um, like corporations are not people.
I don't think it's moving at a federal level, but...
No, they're really not.
At least we don't state by state.
Yeah, um, you know, it's something that really, the shame of it is, so many of those things are not talked about as much as they should be, because pensions really are just overriding everything. Um, you know, I agree that corporations are not people, um, they shouldn't get the benefits of being a person unless, of course, they want to take some of the pain of being a person. Um, so there isn't a lot being done right now. I mean, I wish I had a better answer to that, but that really is, I'm sorry.
I'm Dean Summer again.
Still Dean Summer.
Yeah, how about that, is it changed? Would you send out your, um, questionnaire, right, uh, in the man?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I just, I just nodded.
Thank you.
But, I really believe it's not anybody you find out about this.
Mm-hmm.
But we're talking about a lot of issues here.
Yeah.
But we, and what I hear threats about other people, like, it's frustrating for me all the time...
Yeah.
Is the condition of our roads and our highways.
Ah!
You know, I hear that all the time, you know, they made improvements, someone said eighty-three, said intersection, why aren't we making a four-lane highway?
And why is it ten years?
To handle the...
Yeah.
And also eighty-three, you go down to Page County, and eighty-three, it's a four-lane major expressway, and we get two lanes up here.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's some inequity going on in the state, but, fine, I'll leave it there because I hear that from everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody has come close.
Right.
And I, I don't know that it's so much the roads, is it's, there seems to be the system of mentality in Illinois, we don't have roads to enable the slow traffic. Somehow, it's always to impede road, slow traffic.
It feels that way.
And that is what I, and I've lived here...
Right.
Forty years...
Yeah.
In Illinois.
Yeah.
And it's just, it seems to be that way. Why can't we get roads that's, you know, now, these two, uh, roundabouts that they put in?
Yeah.
In here at, uh...
Uh, Milburn, Washington, Wattsworth.
Yeah, and then they're going to turn another one over in Monaville.
Right, correct.
That might, that might, that might be an assistance.
Right.
But, so why aren't we putting four-lane highways up here?
Okay.
And there, and there are two lanes, and it's really, it really is frustrating. You've just been up with it.
Yeah.
It wastes money, and they...
Waste money?
Yes, it does. And the side fact with it is, if you, if you put money into your infrastructure, it helps the economy so much more than any other method of doing it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so, a couple of things.
I mean, I'm speaking too much, this is a first...
No, no, you know what, this is, I mean, everything we're going to deal...
This is a first political media...
Well, I'm really happy to have everybody here, and I really want them to ask anything, say anything, no topic is off. You know, it's interesting. So first, you probably know how it works, but just in case you don't, I'll bore you with a little bit of it. Okay, so, the county of Lake, um, has quite a bit of transportation money. You may notice, most of the work that's being done on roads are done on county roads right now. So those would be the ones with names, Washington, Fairfield, um, Cedar Lake, Monaville, so those are county roads. And you'll notice most of, Wattsworth Road, um, you'll notice most of the work that's being done on roads, we're going to be doing the Rodman's Road, huge project there, it's a great project, there's going to be an overpass, uh, with the train going over the top, uh, there's, the road's going to be underneath, you know, great improvements. But the county was given a quarter percent of the sales tax years ago, and they're, they can use that money for, um, public safety. So the county decided, and I was a county board member, so, um, this decision was made before I was there, but they decided to use the county's, the safety money that they were getting for roads, public safety. So all that money's been going into road infrastructure. So, the county's actually done a pretty good job with their roads. Washington, um, is four lanes, um, they'll be redoing Washington and, and Grace Lake, and then Round Lake Park all the way over to Cedar Lake. So, they're also, some people are not happy about it, but the county has so much road money, truly, um, has so much road money, that they're now doing state projects. So, the county, um, is doing, using their road money, doing the state's plan, um, in Libertyville, um, Milwaukee, that area in there, so that's county dollars, doing a state road. Uh, forty-five, uh, the Milburn Strangler, as they call it, which a lot of people are happy about where it's going to be positioned, uh, but that's county dollars doing a state project. So, the state, on the other hand, um, because of, you know, the good news is, we drive a little bit less, uh, the good news is, our cars get better mileage, the bad news is, that's less revenue for roads, because we take that gas tax, all right? So we have less money coming in at the state level for roads. So we really need to look at how we fund transportation, but I can tell you it's something that I've always been really concerned about. Um, we were driving here and, and Nick was saying to me, I don't know, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I've lived in a couple of other areas, but is this normal that we have these two-lane roads that are like, and I said, no, it's not, it's a little town. First of all, you've got to think about, along eighty-three, um, along, um, one-twenty, along these two-lane roads, there are a lot of properties, homes built right up to the roads. So first of all, we have that as an issue, and it really is an issue. Uh, to acquire those properties would be a portion, so we ended up building a lot of bypasses, right? We say, well, I can't really put it there unless we want to displace fifty people and their homes, and, and we got a church here, and so we had a lot built next to these roads. So it's expensive to build ones in my county. Um, and we didn't do it before the development came. I mean, in DuPage, what you really saw is, I'll be very frank, you had a Republican Congressman with Republican Congress getting money, you had, you know, so, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's kind of how it works, so you have people getting money for DuPage. We didn't have that in Lake County. You know, we had, um, in, the state of Illinois has been largely Democratic for a very long time, we always had Republican representation, and frankly, it's, I hate to say it, but they weren't able to bring quite as much. Um, I'm really hoping we're going to have, um, some capital money available, and, and we'll be working on those projects, but, sure.
I agree with you, partly, but it creates problems for everybody living here in Dubs.
Right.
And the comment that I heard earlier, when I first moved to the county, was, the county said that, we aren't going to build roads because the people will come.
If you build it, they will come.
And they were here, so what, no, it didn't solve anything.
Yeah.
But, in addition to your comment, so why aren't they making Fairfield Road from top to bottom, beginning to end the four-lane highway? You know, and that could happen.
Right.
And ease traffic, and some of their, these other roads that are state responsibility would help.
Right.
I mean, I don't know that there's any vision here. I mean, that's, that's very incredible, but, but you know, I'm trying...
You know, there is, there's C map, there's, um, there is an overall vision, vision and a plan, it really is the funding. I mean, there are, there are plans to do these things, it's just the funding. I mean, it really is, we can all talk about Route fifty-three, how many years have we talked about Route fifty-three?
Please.
I mean, I can sit way before I was born, I'm pretty sure. You know, um, we still need Route fifty-three, we absolutely do. I mean, you know, I would have told you that I was...
Why did they put it on, why did they put it on the referendum? How many, three years ago, four years ago?
That's called political BS.
Oh. Because they voted for it, and it was seventy-six percent.
That's called, say, we asked you, and we're supporting it, you know, yeah. I mean, there's no funding, didn't mean a darn thing. Yeah. And you are?
I'm Marty Larson.
Okay, hi, Marty.
Um, to add to your road issue...
Yeah.
My girlfriend from North Dakota said, I quote, she and her husband's in the Navy, they were here six, seven years ago, they're back.
Right.
She looks at me and says, are you serious? They're still doing twenty-one? They're still messing with Peterson Road? Really? I says, I don't know, I got nothing. But then she looks at me and she says, she says, you don't understand, you know how they do it in North Dakota? They rip up the road, then you have like three months, really, really, of summer, you can really not even call it summer, because it's like sixty, but anyway, they rip up the road, they put down brand-new road, it is, it is perfect, and it'll last you ten years.
Ten.
Because that's how they have to build the road. It has to be sub-zero crew.
Sure, type three.
And why can't we not do that here?
Right.
Where when we finally get our stupid road in, it's going to be in for, I guarantee you, three years. It'll be done, and within three years, we're going to have potholes, and we're going to have to fix them.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous, it's frustrating.
You know, it is frustrating.
Because I know you've got no money...
Right. The county of Lake actually, again, does a really good job with the roads, they do, uh, because they can do it for longer. Illinois is so cash poor at this point, that what they're doing is patching, you know, really. I mean, they're doing the cheapest road construction they can, which is penny-wise, pound-foolish, as they say, you know, um, we just need a better plan, but we really need funds, you know, and, and we can talk about this, you know, I think it's interesting, we all like to think in Illinois that we're paying a tremendous amount of income tax. We're paying three percent in the state of Illinois, your income tax, that goes to the state. Um, one of the lowest in the United States, and, and trying to fund roads and those kinds of things. It sounds good for everybody to tell you they're never going to increase your taxes. My husband likes to say, you know, there's two things you can be sure of, death and taxes.
Death and taxes.
You know, and, and we all know, if we live in a society and we want those things, it costs money. So I do think that, you know, we saw, um, an increase in our income tax, um, a temporary increase, it was voted, and it should begin to sunset in two thousand and fourteen, but I said when I ran, Illinois has a revenue and a spending problem. I mean, we need to look at certain things and cut certain things. I'm still a proponent of, um, where economies of scale make sense, combining governments, looking at those things. I'm really hoping, I've been talking, Aaron Law, who was the chairman of the county board, talking about, how do we move forward with that? Could we have the county maybe, uh, be the, be the group that oversees and have members from the township, um, municipalities all meet together, and if they're all in the room, maybe they can figure out what are the services that we can share, what are the cuts that we could make and save money? Uh, so those are things I'm, I'm certainly interested in, but the simple truth is, that's why I support, um, some people call it progressive income tax, some people call it graduated, some people call it a fair income tax. But what it really is, is, and you'll be seeing a lot about this over the next probably year, year and a half, um, what it really is, is that people that make more money pay more money. You know, it's, it's that simple. What I, I ended up being a co-sponsor on the legislation, and I did that because I want to be part of the conversation, number one, I want to be in, in that group, in their meeting. So I really think we need to make sure that people understand, if I make thirty thousand dollars a year, what does that mean to me? If I make a hundred thousand dollars a year, what does that mean to me? Don't just tell me that it's going to be more if you make more, tell me what I'm going to pay. I want to know what my percentage is going to be. So, I'm really thinking that we're going to do some really good work educating people so you understand what that means to you, but frankly, we need more revenue in the state of Illinois. We absolutely do. And anybody who tells you any differently is just singing to you. Sounds good though, doesn't it?
Talk, talk about, okay, you mentioned Medicaid's...
And look, I'm being taped too, and I said that, right?
Okay. You mentioned Medicaid's expansion.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm also a, a, you know, the federal one.
Yes.
But the state's through your behind the pay, corner for them.
Absolutely.
You know, where's the money gonna come from for the expansion?
Well, the expansion is paid for by the federal.
Oh, really?
Uh, yeah.
I thought it was maybe a percentage.
Uh, about 10% is what the state will pay. 90%? I mean, how do you turn down 90% money? Um, and I wanna tell you too, before I forget, we're gonna be doing a, the Affordable Care Act begins to roll out early in October. There's so much confusion about it, nobody really knows what they're supposed to do, what's out there. So we'll be doing an informational meeting in September. September, yes, we're open. In September. Um, we'll also be doing a meeting where you can actually go and sign up in October. So once you understand, you can come in. Those are the kinds of things we feel really strongly about. I'm not here to get reelected by, you know, telling you what you wanna hear. And I'm not here to get reelected by being afraid. Uh, but we really wanna offer services to the community. So we're excited about that. And I'll tell you about a couple other things that we have coming up too, but, yeah, but it's paid, 90%. And if they don't pay, we can say, no, we're done. We left that in the law.
Casino expansion.
Oh, I forgot to say, I voted no on 8. Um, and I'll tell ya.
I did.
And I'll tell you why. This is one of those, again, or really frankly, I have sisters that go to casinos, they love to gamble, fine. I don't get it. I, I lost a roll of quarters once, a no, nickels, nickels. Roll a nickel, that was enough for me. I just don't get it, okay. But I understand, most people, here's how most people feel about gaming. They feel like Indiana has it, Wisconsin has it, we may as well make sure that we're keeping people here, getting those dollars here. But what I heard from my constituents was, Olga, if it's gonna help us, pay for education, pay for the pensions, let's expand gaming. So I thought, okay, I'm gonna vote for it. And let me tell you what happened. I learned what a Christmas tree bill is. Anybody know what that is? Okay. Yeah. Okay, so here's what it is. So we go to the meeting and we talk about it, and are you gonna, you know, we support the bill? Yeah, probably, you know, okay, yeah. And we have a casino, um, in Lake County, in this gaming expansion. Uh, probably, I don't know if any of you remember Lakehurst, where that was, there. So, um, so we would, it would maybe benefit our economy, certainly jobs, et cetera. So I go to the last meeting and I find that the way that we've gotten people to come on board to vote for this is by giving out things, basically. So the Latino community was getting $6.5 million for a program that didn't even exist. Not that it's not a good idea, maybe it's a great program for economic development, but for them to say yes and vote yes, they wanted a $6.5 million program. There were just a whole litany of things, um, that were attached to the bill to get different people to vote for it. I looked at the bill and there was, the sponsor of the bill, this is probably one of my favorite stories, so, the sponsor of the bill says to me, you know, are you gonna vote? I said, I can't vote for it. I can't. You know, the bottom line is, at this point, because we've given them, we've sold the casino license for such a low amount, of the tax breaks that we've given casinos, and now, what we're giving away to get people to vote for it, I'm thinking it may even be a net loss as far as income is concerned. And I can't vote for that. And the sponsor of the bill, I, I said to him, I mean, I said, well, come on, we're gonna give $75,000 to the botanical gardens. And he looks at me and he says, that's mine.
Oh.
I was like, oh, oops. But anyway, so I voted against it because of it. I mean, I really did, you know, I mean, if it's really not gonna benefit us, you know, it makes me think of when we sold people on the lottery, saying that, you know, we were gonna use this money for education, you know? And of course, we did, but we forgot to tell you that whatever the lottery produced, we were gonna take general funds and not put those in. So it's just smoking mirrors. Hang on, I have a, I have a new one here. Yes.
Thank you, Senator. Um, first off, thank you trustee Grant and the Antioch officials for hosting this event tonight. Chris Larson, Maybach Township trustee.
Thanks for being here.
You had mentioned a little bit earlier in the conversation about municipalities, counties, and townships are working together to combine services for us.
Sure.
Um, at the same time, there have been a number of bills that have been floating around in different statuses regarding the reduction or elimination of towns, entirely in some areas.
Right.
For example, in Elgin, the reduction of, uh, you know, the highway commissions in various places. What is your position regarding the reduction or elimination of that level of government? Knowing that in a lot of cases, we are a frontline service provider for seniors, youth, at-risk people.
Absolutely. And that's why I think it has to come from a county level. You know, there was interest in looking at township government. Um, because let's face it, when townships were created years ago, there was, excuse me, very, uh, populations were spread out. Municipalities really didn't exist, some. But there were large areas that a township was responsible for plowing their roads, taking care of their services. So in a lot of places, we don't have that anymore. Populated areas, townships don't do that. But townships do still offer help and those kinds of services. So that's important. So that's why actually, I, I thought, okay, so how do we get at this? How do we really look and say, every county's different. What are the needs in every county? So that's why I started a conversation with our county. Uh, just to say, look at, I mean, what do you think about? You know, maybe we should sit down, all those levels of government should sit down together and say, where can we share resources? What are the things we could do? What could you eliminate that I could pick up? Roads always just made sense to me. I mean, I know you have a road commissioner, great guy, a lot of you do, but it's kind of always made sense to me that that should roll into, in a populated area, probably the municipality and the county. They have that equipment, municipalities do the, you know, the areas where you've got neighborhoods, and the county picks up those streets where they're already out plowing. I mean, literally, what happens sometimes is, the county or the state is going along, oops, township lift the plow, do, 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 backed out. I mean, so, uh, so just to look at those things and to not just say, I think it's really easy and popular to say, I'm gonna cut government, cutting government spending, cutting government. Sometimes you cut things and it costs you more. So that's why it really has to be, I think, county by county, maybe start, um, a pilot program. Um, again, ask the county of Lake to legitimately sit down and talk about it. Are there real savings if we combine things, assessors, those kinds of things? I don't know if it makes sense to you, but it is.
It did, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing about Antioch township as far as roads? We've got 91 miles of roads.
Right.
As opposed to maybe 12.
But that's what I'm saying.
Well, my suggestion in the November election, when I ran for county board, was, um, let's merge the assessor's office. That's a function that you can easily, you can occupy the county.
But it's the county, sure.
Literally save the residents of Lake County millions of hours.
We think, but we think, that, 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 we haven't really done the work to say that for sure. And that's what I'm talking about. Because sometimes it sounds great, sounds great for me to say, we're gonna take every assessor, we're gonna have five, and we're gonna have them over here. Maybe there's not enough room, maybe that means building a whole new building. So you really have to look. And, you know, I agree, it's, it's about economies of scale many times, but sometimes smaller is cheaper. So you really have to look at it.
Before we get too far, Jason, I know you had a question submitted earlier, do you wanna, do you wanna jump on that? I can, you were gonna ask how we prioritize funding and sponsor shrinking, that was sort of mine. So we talk a lot about that, is there anything you wanna add to the...
I just think that what we talked about is, what are our core services? What are the things, and what are our priorities? And good news for you, um, we all feel education is a big priority for us. So we prioritize it in the things that we believe are the most important first, and make sure that the funding, we're trying to meet those, those needs as best as possible. I mean, let's face it, if we are not educating, this is a global economy, a global market, you know, and if we are not educating our students and making sure that we're doing a better job than we're doing today, uh, you know, then, you know, the country that we are so proud of, you know, and that we wanna think and, and say is the best country in the world, um, you know, we don't want our heyday to have been the industrialization of this country. You know, we don't. So we have to be honest about that. And we have to be honest that we have to do a better job in educating our students. And understand too, and this doesn't have to do with K-12, that not everybody is a college kid. And to make sure that we have other programs available too, that we really understand that, um, we need to support people and make sure we have craftsmen out there. Make sure we have people that understand, you know, in Germany, they do a really good job with industry, uh, because they have people that are graduating and getting into tool and die there, and those kinds of things. So when you talk to industry people in the state of Illinois, they talk a lot about how, you know, they've got 50, 60, 70,000 dollar a year jobs, which are not bad jobs, that they can't fill. And they can't fill because we don't have students that are going into those things.
Do we actually exhaust everyone's funding? It's impressive.
Well, I, I really mean it, I'm, I'm so happy to have you here. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. I hope you will always know that we truly need to do a good job. That's all we're here to do. Um, I didn't run for this office to be president of the United States, uh, to be, I've been doing this for 20 years. Here's what I like to tell people, I think if you're in your 50s or 60s, run for office because we don't care anymore. We don't. We're not here to feather our nest, we're not here, you know, to make you like us, you know? We're just here to try to do the best job we can. And I really do get up every morning and think about that. And I keep a, um, a plaque in my office that says, do the right thing. You know, and sometimes you don't know what it is. I have to tell you. You have to really search sometimes. But I, I really mean to do the best job every day for you. And, uh, and I, and I hope that you know that our office is always open to you. If you need help with something, please contact us. Um, we've got a couple of events I guess I should probably tell you about. We'll continue to do some of the loan town halls, those are very beneficial. And also, we have a sign up sheet, and I actually do this, and I swear, it made the difference for me on, on the gaming bill. When I don't, when I'm not sure, I mean, truly, I mean, there are times where really the gaming bill, I'm thinking, you know, I couldn't care less, I mean, really. Doesn't, you know, so I really had to reach out and say, what's your opinion on this? What do you think about gaming?